On the agenda tonight, we have a vote on a formal withdrawal of the medical marijuana facility at 654 Asbury Street. We'll be talking about ongoing master planning. We will talk about a couple potential future bylaw amendments and review meeting minutes and so forth. So, first thing on the agenda, we received a letter requesting withdrawal of the site plan review application, and I'm assuming also for the storm water management permit for 654 Asbury Street Green Meadows Farm LLC. So, we need to take a vote to accept that withdrawal without prejudice.
I move that we accept the withdrawal of the medical marijuana facility site review, 654 Asbury Street, without prejudice.
Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Denimous.
Any indication of what their future use of the farm will be?
Haven't heard. I haven't heard, anyway.
Not a bit.
Okay. Close to the chest.
Next up, master planning. We'll talk about our residential master plan presentation scheduled for September 19th. Patrick, can you kind of bring us up to date on where we are, please?
We have received a draft master plan document. We have made comments on it. I would encourage board members to continue to review the document that we've sent out. I think you've got hard copies of it, too. It's got a lot of data in it. As we've noted before, and we've conveyed those notes and thoughts to the consultants, is what we really need are suggestions, recommendations. How do we tweak our zoning bylaws? What is it that you suggest, given the general parameters of thoughts that we've had in our workshops and our other public activities? What are people's general thoughts, and how do we convey that into recommendations and changes to our bylaws? So, that's what they're working on right now. We will have a master plan presentation that will be on September the 19th. That is, to be at the Senior Center. I'll make sure that that gets a lot of airplay in every venue we can get to. Again, that will be at the Senior Center at 7:00 PM on September the 19th. And I do encourage members to continue to review, and if you have any comments, I'll send them to me, and I'm happy to send those to the consultant and have them integrate.
Great. And Rick, you had some thoughts on, I don't know if you want to go through them tonight or not, but kind of how you're thinking that might work, and what might be better than just presenting straight-up data that they have in there, and how we might set it up?
Yeah, and I just have a question, and I'll answer that. And when do you expect that we'll get the revised draft, the new draft?
16th of August is the date that they have told us, which is not too far away, and I have pushed and pushed to try to get it quicker than that. They have a pretty full dance card, I guess.
Okay. So, that will hopefully include any comments that we've already made, and as well as Judy's financial analysis-
Correct.
... of various housing options. Now, my only, I do have some thoughts on it, and I had forwarded you some information, and I know you're going to read that. I'm just thinking that we ought to invite formally and separate invitations to the various town boards and committees, to the selectmen, the finance committee, the affordable housing trust, ZBA, Mary Beth Lotton at the Senior Center, DPW Director, Capital Planning Committee, and the school committee. We actually invite them, I don't know if we send them a letter, or how that kind of formal invitation gets made. It certainly would be-
Email is easy, but I think a letter is a little bit more substantial in people's hands and minds, so I'm more than happy to do that to all of the bodies.
If you could do both, that would be great.
Sure. Yeah, absolutely.
Because it's, what, six weeks away, and we want to get it on people's calendar? So, and maybe like the week before is, and I'd be happy, and maybe other people would just pick up the phone and call people and say, "This is very important. We'd like to see somebody from your committee there." Because once we get going with some of this proposals, whatever they may be, all of these people are going to be impacted one way or another, so it'd be nice if they actually were participating. So, and I just sort of outlined some thoughts I had, and sort of setting the stage for this presentation. What do we have, like two hours?
Yes.
Okay. So, we're going to have to really script this with Jen and company. Jen and Judy will be there as well.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And that's going to be like herding cats.
Yeah.
So, I'm not sure how we'll do that, but we'll figure that out. But I was thinking it would be good to sort of start off and kind of like set the agenda and say, you know, why are we here tonight? How did this all begin? So, people, you know, because various people have been to various, you know, parts of this, or previous presentations, or they've been to interviews, or what have you, but I think it's, this is a good time to sort of bring it back together. Why are we doing this? Why are we here tonight? What do we hope to accomplish? Just to sort of set expectations. And then, you know, tell the audience sort of what we expect from them, you know, what their role is tonight and going forward, so they actually feel like they're part of the presentation. And the other thing, and I think I mentioned this last meeting, is try and paint a picture for them of what, you know, Hamilton, sort of the broad forces are that, you know, or condition of Hamilton, and how housing impacts people. Again, you know, I think I mentioned this again, and I've come up with a draft Venn diagram of housing, and it's sort of three circles, which I'm happy to share with people, with housing in the middle, because it's what supplies the money for our town government and our schools, and, you know, it's where our tax revenue goes, and so there's, it's sort of at the core of what our town operates. And then, land, what do we have, and what is it used for? You know, again, a sort of broad brush picture, and maybe we put up a map, or whatever it is, but-
The percentages of land that are available.
Percentage of land is-
You may want to, is that something you would want to involve the open space committee with and have in the new plan, in some sense?
I'm not sure. At this point, it's, we're really doing a broad brush.
Well, broad brush is what the plan's going to be.
If you have information detailed in-
Not yet.
Okay. So-
So, Rick, I wonder if we need to actually write out all these comments for them.
For who? Oh, well, hey, here's an idea. I think that they're going to be supporting players in this, is that whether it's Brian or other people on this committee, is actually, we're going to be running it.
Yeah.
And various people can take pieces of what I'm describing, and then, when their time comes, they can do their presentation, which is all great, which is a lot of information, but we're not going to let them do it, because they're not getting paid to do it, and they won't have the information, and so-
Well, yeah, I mean, what you just said, all the background on why we're here, the land use, the tax, all that kind of stuff, needs to be done by us.
Right.
Right. And then, they can focus on-
Right, and then, so, we've described sort of why we're here, what we hope to accomplish, what your role is, where we are as a town, our land use, what's available in terms of, you know, what's preserved, what's not, what's open, what could be developed. Why would we develop it? And that should be part of the discussion as well. And then, plug them in and say, okay, so, here's what their results from the surveys, what people say is important, what they're looking for, what are the demographics, what's the current housing, what are the economics?
And then, I think it would be important to say, and so, these are the recommendations to help us move from where we are towards what people say they want.
Right. So, that's what we hope to get out of them when they submit their next draft.
Yeah.
And they can certainly be making those. And then, sort of wrap it up is, is to say, okay, so what's next? So, what's going to happen next? And we're, and it's almost, you know, coming back to, and what's your role again? Well, the planning board will be reviewing these recommendations and bringing these forth for discussion in public forums. You know, you all are invited and encouraged to be attending, be involved, be telling us what you like, what you don't like, so that we come up with something that's workable and fits within the town's vision of itself. So, that's sort of a general framework of what I was thinking.
I like it.
I'd be having to work on putting that into a slide deck.
Oh, good.
Working with you on that.
Ooh, 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 all right.
That's what I do. Okay.
That would be great.
So, I could easily take your outline and start building a deck, and then you can, I can edit it as comments.
Yeah, and if people have other ideas, please throw them in, because I just sort of like, you know, we spent all this time and money, and, you know, it's like, this is our performance. This is where we get to deliver the product, and I want to make sure that it's done well professionally, so that people go, okay, it's our document, it's about our town, and it's about what we need to do to preserve it.
I think it's good to just, to be really clear, so people understand, and it doesn't like go off into the left field, you know?
Yeah, and that's my biggest fear, is, you know, it goes on the shelf, and, okay, thanks, you know, you guys go work on it, and then we'll come up with whatever proposal it is, and other people, "Oh, my God, where did that come from?" And, you know, "How did this happen?"
Well, that, and that's after the fact, but during the meeting, I think you're saying as well, right, that we don't get focused on some little nugget in that they present, right? That, oh, my God, you know, some random thing that somebody focuses on. We try to-
Almost like focusing on a site, rather than the larger picture.
Well, that, yeah, that, or, yeah, exactly, some random little piece in there versus the big picture. And I think we also need to stress that this is, you know, one small portion of an entire master plan that we still need to address, you know, portions of.
Right.
I think that's going to be one of the next steps, is, you know, what is our next step with the master plan, right? What are the next section or sections that we're going to be looking at?
Does anybody have any thoughts on that?
Well, I mean, you mentioned the open space, right? I mean, that's, that's a portion of it.
Right. So, maybe we could say, here's what's going to happen with the master plan next, and within the housing-
Or what we'd like to see happen with the-
Yeah, here's what we're going to do with the housing piece, but this is only one piece of the master plan, and our recommendations are going to be going for whatever that is, open space.
Right. Recreation, yeah.
Take the opportunity to educate people as to what a master plan is.
Yeah.
Yeah. You know, there's a lot of thinking about what a master plan is that isn't quite, you know, what we need to be focused in. Typically, there's, you know, the residential component, like we're working on, there is a land use component, there's transportation, infrastructure, capital plans.
Recreation.
And then, recreation as well, and then, public facilities. Then, there's the capital document that typically follows along, that's all the budgetary kinds of, you know, coverage that addresses it over time. In a related way, I know the town manager has mentioned on a number of occasions that he wants to start a vision and interaction process with the public. And, you know, we haven't really fleshed out exactly topics that he wants to focus on, but I want to get that from him, so, you know, planning board members can start thinking about that, too, because I suspect a lot of it will be in our wheelhouse. Another topic, too, I wanted to get some of your reactions to. We have, as I've mentioned before, the town is pursuing production of what's called a housing production plan. It's basically a required plan that the state expects every city in town to prepare every five or six years. It's basically a look at demographics, a look at complexities, and how the town is doing relative to affordable housing. And a lot of grants depend on this sort of thing, a lot of state, you know, resources depend on this thing as well, so, you know, every, as I say, every city in town has to prepare these. We're in the process of that with the same consultant. They are going to be holding a hearing to present their product on October the 2nd of this fall. I've been working with the community preservation planner person who deals with affordable housing, also deals with the Hamilton Affordable Housing Trust. We've been working with the consultant evaluating their documentation. I think I've sent it out to planning board members. There's actually a lot of really good graphics in there, maps that illustrate buildable areas, non-buildable areas, et cetera. So, it's a, you know, an important document. We have had some concerns over the fact that people would confuse the master plan effort with the housing production plan, so we have sort of separated this in a way to help people better focus on the master plan first and the housing production plan afterwards.
Patrick, this is also separate from the requirement to have 10% affordable housing, according to the state.
Well, this document has to basically tell the state and tell ourselves where we at with that.
And how we're going to try to reach it.
So, that's the, that was, so this is the same thing that was done several years ago, that said we were going to do, what, 14 units or something like that a year?
Yes.
Okay.
And we're going to have to say we didn't make it.
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, we certainly could mention that coming, you know, during the meeting, or at the end of the meeting.
Yeah, no question.
Sort of what's next, well, okay, there's the master plan, other open space, transportation, capital planning, and by the way, related to this is the housing production plan, and there'll be a public hearing on October 2nd to discuss that. So, it's all part of the picture.
Do you have data on how many residential dwellings have been built in the town for the last decade, year by year?
Yeah, I'm pretty sure we've got that.
Yeah. Because I'm, I sort of think the market is telling us something. They don't want to build for affordable housing. There's no developer that we know that's come in and said, "Oh, I'm really anxious to do worker housing or affordable housing."
Yeah, I disagree with that statement.
Except you missed Harbor Lights.
Pardon me?
Harbor Lights.
Yeah, but they bailed.
Well, why did they bail, Peter?
I don't know.
Because there was too much public outcry. I mean, that's, I don't think your statement's at all correct here.
Because they wanted town support. That's how they do things. They don't, they don't, they try not to do things without town support.
Well, they had a lot of support for your property downtown, but that didn't matter. They needed a sister site.
Right. It was linked to Long Mallow.
Yeah.
So-
Yeah, but that was a huge project. The notion that people in the town-
Well, it wasn't, it wasn't.
I noticed that people in the town didn't want 100 units or 200 units. Everybody was afraid it was going to become the Cabrini-Green of Hamilton.
Well, yeah, and then they proposed a plan with 40 units, and people still didn't want it.
So, yeah, I mean, it's-
No, because they didn't say what was going to happen to the rest of the land. So, they agreed Harbor Light was going to go do 40, but then there was another proposal that the back part of the land would also be developed, but that was unspecified. So, the town, citizenry got the impression that this could be an endless, you know, chain eventually leading to hundreds and hundreds of units.
Yes, and then we had Kurt, what's his last name?
Miller.
Miller, you know, that was threatening to build 120 units, which of course never happened.
Right.
Anyway.
But if we have to-
Developers aren't coming in to propose it, Peter, because there's a huge cost to do it, and there's a huge resistance to getting it built in any economically viable scale. And I think, what was the, does anybody remember what, Wenham finally settled with Harbor Lights, the size of that project?
I think 48.
I think it was, they originally proposed 60, I think.
It was 60.
And they brought it down to 48?
Something like that.
Yeah, 48.
Where are they putting it?
Maple Street.
What?
There's Maple Street, behind Burnett's Garage.
But I don't think they're going to build it, are they?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure they are.
They've reached a settlement.
Oh, I didn't know that.
They're going, so Wenham is going to make its quota.
It'll be over their quota.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, it's possible. You just have to, you know, find the right location, and you build a consensus, and-
I think the same thing happened, the kind of outcry that occurs with affordable housing is essentially what happened to the marijuana project. Same kind of, and-
For different reasons.
Well, I think that project went up in smoke.
Ah, yeah, but it wasn't, it wasn't the separate kind of smoke. It didn't smell as good. It wasn't as-
Yeah, no, I mean, it's, you know, it's another side of the same coin.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. It's all the NIMBY, and it's all a little of everything.
Right. But I mean, it's all of the element of the discussion is, how do we, how do we address all these kind of like issues that are sitting there and are not going away? So-
So, getting back to master plan, so you're, you're going to help with the slideshow.
Do you connect on the Hamilton-Wenham email site?
Yep.
Okay.
I have an email.
And do you check it up frequently?
Uh, yeah, I have it on my phone, so.
Oh, cool.
Yeah, I see it.
So, I'll start besieging you.
Yes. Yes. Exactly.
That's great, thank you. And, you know, if people have other ideas, or topics, or whatever, please, or information they think should be included, we'll put together something and obviously preview it with the whole committee and say, "Hey, here's what we're thinking, and here's the documentation we'd like to present," and, you know, so we get some unanimity.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Good.
Anything else on that? Potential future bylaws.
Before we discuss future ones, can I ask a question about past ones? The ones that we've, when will we get an updated zoning bylaw book with things like the accessory apartment bylaw in it, stuff like that?
You can have one now, if you'd like.
I just got one today. Ask, and it shall be given by Patrick.
Okay.
Just come to Mohammed.
Okay, that would be wonderful.
Yeah, sure.
Thank you. When I joined, Patrick sent me, I think that was a fairly up-to-date one.
Yeah, it was.
It was. Had all that stuff. I didn't know they were out. Ah, poor me.
I would take one, too, then.
Sure.
Very old.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, now on the future.
I'm sorry, thank you, thank you, Brian.
Tony, want to go over first solar systems, or?
Well, just let me say that I didn't mean to get into discussion on it, but I just, I did include in your package the proposal that one of the selectmen had prepared regarding the conservation bylaw, and I did-
Where are we?
Number three. And, you know, I'm given to understand that this is a change which is basically an update to the existing Conservation Commission's bylaw, and it's simply meant to strengthen that. How that works, I'm, I don't really know.
So, can we back up?
Sure.
Is this including Rosemary Kennedy's?
Yes, this, this is her product.
So, at one point, she was going to be proposing a separate conservation district bylaw, or a conservation-
Right.
So, where are-
So, this, well, I had asked Rosemary to come tonight to talk about this.
Okay.
She thought I was a little bit premature, because they're still going through some of this, this is just a draft. There were some things she needed to talk to the Conservation Commission about, and the town council about, before it made sense to come here. But through that, this, like Patrick said, is not a replacement for the conservancy district bylaw that we, you know, that was voted out essentially at town meeting last fall, I believe, given that it was, you know, never used, really, and kind of redundant.
Indefensible.
Right, and that, too. This is a replacement or slash update of our current wetlands protection bylaw that the Conservation Commission, you know, has jurisdiction over.
So-
Every town has, most towns have their own wetlands bylaw.
So, is this a product of the Conservation Commission?
Well, that, how it came about, I'm not 100% sure. I think it, it's Rosie's, Rosemary's wanting to strengthen that bylaw.
Okay.
That's my-
And shouldn't she, I mean, shouldn't there be some ongoing process between her and the Conservation Commission?
Yes, yes.
To go through the old bylaw and say, "Look, let's, let's do this instead, and let's add this, and let's take out this," and at the end result, you have a set of bylaw changes.
Right.
And-
Right. So, what I, what I don't know is what has happened before this, behind the scenes, what have you, you know, how she's, I don't know if this is just completely new, and now she's taking it to them. I have no idea how it happened.
So, Peter, at the last meeting, you said you were going to talk to Rosemary Kennedy about the conservancy district?
I've been away. I'm sorry.
Okay.
Do you want me to do it, this time?
Bill, maybe you can find out.
Yeah.
I mean, you indicated you could talk to her, I just like, it would be fun to know how, what she focuses on.
I will, I will, I will email her tonight and sort of, sort of say, you know, "What would you like us to do?" The logical thing is to-
So, yeah, so the other question, so the other question is, we technically don't have to hold any hearings on this.
Right, because she wants it as a town bylaw.
Right, well, even, even, even our current one, I mean, it's a conservation bylaw, it's not a zoning bylaw.
Right, which is not in our purview.
So, it's not in our purview.
Right.
That's number one. So, do we even, and we can comment on it, sure, but we don't have to hold any public hearings.
Right. So, Bill, it would be great if you could sort of find out what, what changes are, or what the process is to make it happen.
All right, all right.
And then, oh, God, I forgot what I was-
Well, yeah, I, I was gonna take this, look at the old one, and kind of compare, but I don't even know if it's worth doing yet, until she-
I would wait.
I wouldn't.
Finalizes and things.
I mean, in some ways, that should also be responsibility of her and the Conservation Commission.
Correct.
Right. Clarity and transparency would be helpful here.
Right. I mean, the one thing that it does do that I saw pretty quickly is that it has a zone of 200 feet around Vernal Pools. That is jurisdiction of the ConCon, instead of 100 feet.
So, that's what-
But there are a lot of things like that, that might- But there are a lot of things like that, that might or might not, you know, in terms of how conservation has evolved, represent opportunities for change.
Right, no, you're right. That was just one that I picked out right away.
But that's, that's what would be helpful, just for the general reader and certainly for us, just to have an intelligent discussion is, is where are those changes being made?
Right.
And why? I mean, as you said, there may be good scientific information or updating, like we did with our bylaw a couple of years ago. You know, there's case, there's case law or there's new scientific information or whatever, just so.
Just why it's helpful to have the one that's there with the changes and track changes so you can see.
And, and the other part of it is that hundred to two hundred foot change, that she may be, is the hundred foot a local mandate or a state mandate?
So, state mandate is twenty-five.
Twenty-five, okay.
I mean, yeah, I mean typically though.
Not for Vernal Pool.
Not, well, right. Vernal Pools are still, you know, essentially town by town. The state has twenty-five feet. Most towns have a hundred feet.
Around, around wetlands or?
Well, around wetlands that, that they have jurisdiction over. Then they, beyond that, a lot of them have a, you know, a twenty-five footer, fifty footer, no build or no touch. And then beyond that, they have jurisdiction, but you can do something. You can disturb, you can build, you know, whatever. Ours is seventy-five, I think. No, no build or no disturb. I can't remember.
So, if she changes that and there are, I'm assuming a number of pieces of wetlands that are gonna be affected, is, as I think Patrick mentioned, is that a taking? No.
Well, it's, it isn't. Well, so, I know, I know of another town close by that has a two hundred foot Vernal Pool restriction. So, it's not unheard of by any means.
Not unheard of, but if it, if, but if, but if you bought the property, assuming it was whatever it is right now, seventy-five or a hundred, and it goes to two hundred. But the state, the state authorizes cities and towns to do this as part of their police power. It's not eminent domain. So, I mean, if we were to do this by ourselves, you know, landowners might sue for a taking, but the fact that it's authorized by the state.
Well, right, and it's not, it's also not saying you can't.
Can't do anything.
Build, right. Some of it says, yeah, you can't build in a certain distance or whatever. But they're allowed, they, they have review power, but you can still build within, you know.
Still some economic use left.
Right, right. Now, a lot of people think, you know, that the Vernal Pools need to be especially protected, right, compared to just a typical well. So, that's why the two hundred feet.
Yeah, but in, in a sense, it doesn't make any sense for a Vernal Pool because the problem is that the salamanders are away from the pool most of the year and they only go back to the pool to procreate and lay eggs and then they wander off again. And they can be long distances from that pool.
Well, no, I know. We've, we've, we learned that a while back. But, no, I don't, I don't wanna get into the weeds.
No, no, I, I understand. I agree.
Get into the weeds on this, huh?
So, you don't wanna get into the Vernal Pool on this one?
The deep end.
So, well, let, let's wait for, you can email Rosemary. We'll find out a little bit about the background.
I think some, some of your direction and wisdom would be helpful to the process.
Okay. You know, as, I mean, as long as they're Conservation Commission and her and whoever are working together on it, I, you know, again, we have no.
Right.
No say in it, so.
No, but as a voter, I would just, when they come, if this comes to, and I don't even know if it needs to come to town meeting, those are the questions I would be asked.
Yeah, I.
If you, if you change the bylaw, then you have to go to the town meeting.
It's a bylaw. It's, it's, it has to go to Wenham.
So, those would be the questions I would have is, okay, so what, what did you change and why?
And how is it better?
Yeah.
Right.
Okay.
Okay.
I did send out a couple of other items. One was regarding short-term rentals that you'll also see in your package there behind number three. I have given you separately also a couple of bylaws that came from the city of Beverly on topics that I have had some concerns about and people have expressed those to me, including on small-scale, ground-mounted solar energy systems as well as roof-mounted solar energy systems.
I thought that was quite interesting and well-placed, Beverly.
Yeah, no, it's good.
I mean, they addressed the three issues, the commercial stuff, the stuff in the backyard and the stuff on your roof. Different standards for each one. And, I mean, there's a lot of roofs in this town. A lot of people have roof systems, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I mean, it's, and it's pretty basic. It's not, I mean, it talks about historic districts a little bit, but, I mean, it's pretty straightforward. Right, it just says it can't be more than X distance off the roof and stuff like that, but it doesn't say you can't do it. I mean, other than the ground-mounted where it gives specific requirements for distances, but that's, it's, it's very straightforward and pretty well done.
So, the question is, so, and I'm just looking at the roof-mounted systems and it may be true, I did give this a quick look over, but I don't remember the details. Are these special permits for all of these?
Some of it's by right. The only special permit.
I just saw it for roof-mounted.
Well, it says, "A special permit from the planning board shall be required for any roof-mounted solar energy system that does not meet the height requirement."
Ah, okay, thank you for clarifying that. Okay.
Yeah, which I like that.
Yeah, same with ground-mounted.
Clean and clear for administration purposes, for inspection purposes.
Yeah, yeah. No, I thought that was well done.
We just need to make sure that we get the right dimension and such that we're comfortable with.
Right. So, what's the next step?
Everybody review it, you know, as tightly as you can. See what you think you like or want to change.
So, is this going to be part of a list of bylaw changes that we're bringing to the spring town meeting?
Yes, sir. Yeah, thanks for bringing that up.
Won't be spring, though. They're trying not to do zoning bylaws in the spring, right?
Well, they, they had made that comment to me, but since we sort of got punted into, you know, this.
In the cycle.
This cycle, I think that we have to do it in the spring, otherwise we're waiting a whole year and I.
Right, I know.
Yeah.
Okay, no, that's fine.
Maybe they can limit, limit us to no more than three, mercifully.
You know what? It's our call.
Okay, let's limit ourselves to no more than three, please.
You know, administratively handling three at one time is about as much as you wanna do.
Well, yeah, more or less. I'm, I'm not advocating more. I'm just.
I understand.
Same, right. Yeah, the short-term rentals, I know this is from Manchester, I believe.
Yeah, this is Manchester by the Seas text. I have also asked our new Town Council if she can provide us some from other communities that might be useful. I also sent her this one to look at too as, and notified her that we were looking at this text.
Yeah, I mean, I think it, it's okay. It's a little wordy, but it's not quite as clean as the one that, you know.
She mentioned to me what we need to also think about is, do we want to manage short-term rentals through a zoning bylaw, through a town bylaw? Do we wanna, you know, make sure there are associated Board of Health regulations? How do we wanna deal with taxation too? So, there are a lot of facets to this that, you know, I think that, actually, I wish Bill Olson were here to give us some input from the Board of Selectmen's side because I, I think there's monetary things as well as other governmental things to think about.
Is the town planning to tax it especially?
Yeah, honestly, Peter, the town hasn't come to terms on anything. So, you know, we're, we're the ones at the head of this.
So, did the Board of Selectmen propose that the town needed this? Is that where this is coming from or?
Well, they have, they have noticed that there were concerns made by some residents, particularly along Tobacco Lake, where there are some Airbnb units and other short-term rentals out there that had caused some issues. This board, probably three years ago, had a number of folks that were in with a lot of complaints over it at that time. We haven't really since. I'm not sure what's happened, you know, in the neighborhood, but I know those properties are still being rented.
You know what might be useful? Just to go on the website and dial in Hamilton.
It's, it's funny.
Yeah, see, see exactly, you know, who's renting what and where.
Before I came here, I mentioned something. My daughter was asking me what was on our agenda for tonight, so I mentioned Airbnb and she just wasn't familiar with the terms, so we went online. So, I showed her what it was and there were very few in Hamilton. Like, you pull up Hamilton, there's a few that I saw and then the rest were, you know, Beverly and Ipswich and others, but, so.
I'm looking right.
I mean, Manchester has always had a lot of summer rentals, so that may connect in there very well, but I don't know a big, big business like that in Hamilton.
Right, this talks a lot about less, you know, six nights or less. I'm sorry, less, unit for less than six nights, executive night. So, it's not a typical weekly rental, like, you know. But I, I know for a fact that Manchester had a lot of issues with the short-term rentals. That's why they did this.
Why don't we find out how big, big the issue is before we design a bylaw around it?
Yeah, I was looking at my.
Oh, Laura's already on it.
I was looking at my Airbnb app.
Fifteen? Is there a map? Are they all congregated around Tobacco Lake or?
There's like three off of Mill Road, almost Ipswich.
On what road?
No.
Couple in Asbury Grove. There's about.
Which would be at like a summer cottage.
On the back of Myopia. And then like one on Essex, near Grapevine, and then one near Gordon College.
Is that you, Bill?
No.
So, some of these might be like in Wenham or like in a neighboring town. It's a little hard to tell on here, but.
I, I, I agree with Bill is, you know, are we solving a problem we don't have?
Yeah, I, I think that's smart to think about it. You know, we haven't had the complaints in a few years now.
So, you mentioned that the.
If it were a source of revenue, that would be one thing.
Right, but if there's.
But no one's gonna tax it.
Fifteen hundred dollars a year, about a hundred dollars a piece.
Wild west.
So, the Town Council was going to be.
Sending me some, some other bylaws from other communities that had enacted something.
Okay.
And I, I would see why Manchester by the Sea would have more problems with it than we would.
Yeah, absolutely.
Oh, yeah.
So, Laura, did the ones that's, used to be down in, on Tobacco Lake not show up?
There's two on Tobacco Lake.
Two?
Two.
Okay, so what do we do next?
Yeah, just review the, the bylaw, the solar bylaw information as I mentioned. I'll get some information coming from Town Council and I'll also look and see if, you know, there are things that have come from the folks that were complaining about the Airbnb units that I'm unaware of in the last couple of years and make a note of it. What else? Yeah, I think that's it for now.
Okay.
All right.
Let's see, you have some minutes. I did prepare the minutes from the executive session of last meeting and this was basically where the board was agreeing to release prior executive session minutes. So, I didn't feel like there was a need for the cone of silence or anything like that. So, you have this in your, your package. Also, July ninth and the twenty-third, so that gets us up to date.
So, the executive session ones have already, already been approved, correct?
These executive session ones have not been approved because, yeah, I just prepared these since the last meeting, so.
So, I do have a modification I wanna make to the July twenty-third and it's on page two. It's really the third paragraph down, starts with Rick Mitchell said housing contributed ninety-seven percent of local tax revenue and seventy percent of land was already preserved and another thirty percent was in wetlands. I'd like to strike that thirty percent in wetlands because if that were true, there would be no land available.
I saw that.
For anything. So, a period after preserved. Or, I don't know, actually, preserved and/or protected.
Okay, say all of that again, so I have.
Seventy percent was preserved and/or protected.
Seventy percent of the land was already preserved and/or protected.
Okay, got it. All right.
Any other comments? I wasn't here, so I'll abstain from the role of that on those.
So, I will move the minutes of July twenty-third.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll abstain. July ninth, any comments on those?
I'll move the minutes of July ninth.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
I moved the executive session minutes of July twenty-third.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I was not here either, I'll abstain. All right. Any, any other board business from anyone?
No, I'll just make a plug since we have a audience, potential audience on TV. The, there is a new tab on the town website called Shop Local, which lists, I don't wanna say all the businesses in town, but the majority of businesses in town. It's quite well done and provides a map of where all those businesses are located. And then it provides a listing of those businesses with websites for each of those businesses that have websites. And this comes from the Hamilton Development Corporation, which Brian and I are on. And we expended twenty-five hundred dollars to support that being done and the business community. So, and the businesses are very happy about that, so I just, I'm making a plug for it. It just went live yesterday. We'll be doing more advertising on Facebook and other locations, but I just thought I'd mention it.
Who did all the work to set it up?
It's a private consultant. We hired a contractor to, to design the webpage and it went through several iterations.
Was it the one that had done the town website to begin with? It was the same. It was the same company that did the town website?
I believe it is the same company that did the town website.
Yeah, pretty sure.
So.
So how do you get to that site?
Well, you just go to the town website.
For the town website.
And there's a tab at the top.
Which says?
Shop Local.
Shop Local, okay.
That's it.
Anything else?
Is this the fastest meeting we've ever had?
I don't know about that, it's close.
Close. We're, we're trying to beat our record every time. I make a motion, we adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?